Okay, so I think our motion called into order. Of the United States of America and in this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Berry?
Here.
Ms. Rosalynn Davies?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Ms. Robinero?
Here.
Our motion to put the agenda on the agenda. Motion, Ms. Mitchell? Ms. Robinero? All favor?
Aye.
For both the minutes of the day, because there were a couple of changes on the actual action. And August 23rd, motion? Motion, Ms. Mitchell?
Aye.
So, Mr. Peters?
Aye.
I want to say that we did take a tour tonight of all the buildings and thank you. They're looking very nice. We appreciate the effort and everything else that has gone through. They're looking great.
I just had Lions Club at their opening day.
Okay.
And wasn't anybody in line that I saw?
I didn't see anybody.
Okay.
Our first is the Lions Club. We have a Lions Club here tonight, so we'd love for you to come up.
We had no idea on how much is on the docket tonight, so we did not want to take too much. But we did want to give you an idea of who we are and what we do. My wife Donna says hello.
Hi, everybody.
Hi. Or hi, how you doing folks? So, I'll just start with some information about Lions itself. It shouldn't take more than about 10 minutes if you have questions. Okay, there's probably about 1.4 million Lions in the world. Forty-eight thousand strong, covering 200 countries around the world. So it's not a small organization. And basically what they concentrate on is vision. They were organized in 1917 by a guy named Melvin Jones. And then in 1925, they had a convention and Helen Keller came in and she was the speaker. And she challenged Lions to be knights of the blind. So that's where we got our direction from. And our motto is, we serve. We meet every month at Living Goods on Wednesdays. So Thursday's now, Thursday's Monday. And we have fundraisers such as a turkey trot, a white cane sale. And these produce revenues so that we can give to the following causes of which we're about to reach. You want to start, Anne?
Yes, and I got involved only a couple of years ago. My husband Lincoln has been involved for 54 years. And I did not realize how many great things they do just in the schools. They perform yearly screenings at the primary building and offer assistance on security corrective eyewear for anyone that falls through the cracks that doesn't qualify for assistance. And we gladly do that. We supply assistance forms to all of the nurses at every grade level. We give two $600 scholarships to the Peru seniors and one scholarship to Clint Community College. We attend the primary school open house. We participate at PTO's trunk and treat. And we volunteered at the Peru primary intermediate book sale that they have, the PTO has. We donate to the, I think it's called POC, H-O-B-Y, the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Award Program so that students can go. And we have attended such activities as the bicycle hammy giveaway and friendship tunnel at the school's request. Most of these I did not know about until accept the scholarships. And in the community, we participate in the National Greenup Day. We support boys and girl scouts. We support the Peru Youth Commission, usually have a team each season. Participate in the annual Apple Fest parade. We donate to the Peru and the Keysville libraries, public libraries. We donate to JCEO and Head Start food shelves. We perform monthly highway pickup on Bear Swamp Road. And we constructed and upgraded the Welcome to Peru signs for arteries entering Peru. And we've also purchased historic painted panels for the mill that Peru Hayworth Mason Park. If you haven't been down to see those, really has changed the area down there. Not just the ones that Lions have donated. And at the end, after Ed talks, I will pass out, this will teach her in me, will pass out the list in case you can't remember.
That's good. When we do our podcast, it would be nice to mention all those things that you do.
Right, and most of those are because of the fact that you allow us to have the turkey trot here. Because that's our biggest fundraiser quite far.
And that was the reason why we wanted to come here first and foremost was the fact that we were always letting us in. I guess as long as we keep supplying insurance certificates, we'll be all right, I hope.
We've been various places around the building.
Yes. Okay, outside the community, Lions give to what's called the Lions Club International Foundation. And that is a fund that takes care of catastrophic relief efforts around the world. So some of our money goes to Hawaii or wherever else it's needed, whatever has happened. It seems like it's happening every day now, but we give out as much as we can when we can. We also support the Tour de Force group, which is bicyclists, not bicyclists, but runners who assist state troopers who have lost, state troopers' wives who have lost their husbands or wives in the line of duty. And it helps get them through their tough time. We also support down at Albany, there's Alliance Eye Bank and hospital that we support. And that's for any kind of correction, correction in vision that we don't think they can handle up here. It's a nice big outfit and they know what they're doing. We support the Christmas Bureau, Clint County Christmas Bureau. We collect glasses and hearing aids that we send off once every three or four months. And they're in several different locations around the town. We give to a New York Guide Dog Foundation. We support a new organization, it's called Camp Abilities. It started in Brockport and now there's one in Saratoga. And basically what they do is a camp for kids that are totally blind. And it's a great thing to watch. We went down, Dave Dalton and I went down, watched the presentation. And they have the balls that have sound in them so the kids can go around and they can kind of until they hit the ball. And they do running because they're tethered to somebody with vision, but they can run 400 or something like that. They do a good job setting these kids up. We support Habitat for Humanity, the North Country Center for Independence, which we used to give to the KAVI, the North Country Association for Vision impaired, but now that's been absorbed. That gets into the Center for Independence. Special Olympics, Camp Tecumta, Tecumta, and the Baden Farm. So we give to all those places. And then the thing that gives me the most pleasure lately is, and I'm not going to do anything to anybody, but this is our vision screener. Okay, and some of you may have had your children sit in front of this. You have, but this is the new screener. It's not the old one we use. And basically, it's a screener. It doesn't give exams. There is no way we can be as accurate as Lions as much as ophthalmologists can be. I mean, they're the ones that make the final decision. But what this does is it prints out on a piece of paper what it sees in the child's eye. And then the parent can take that sheet of paper to the ophthalmologist. And not that they're not going to do a thorough job anyhow, but at least it gives the direction. They have to look at a sheet and help out. And... Right, right? I said, you probably got a lot of your dog. Just hoping for this. This is what the kids see. And what it does is from two feet away, it locks in. And will read the child's eyes unless the child has had surgery like cataracts or something like that. Then it's hard to do. It's also a little bit difficult to do for children who are special needs. We can do children with special needs, but they're very hard to capture. Very hard to capture. So, now, give it up.
We caught some children with lazy eye that nobody knew about, nobody had caught. And the parents, many very conscientious parents, didn't realize that they needed to take their child early. If they hadn't caught it, they'd lose sight in an eye by the time they're in about their 30. And I know an adult had lost theirs that way.
The brain, and this, I'll keep with this for a second. The brain tells the eyes at approximately six years old that what you've got is what you're going to have. So if we can screen pre-K and kindergartners, which we do here at Peru, when we can screen them, we can get them a head start into an ophthalmologist and hopefully they'll have something with their straps, whether it's a patch over the stronger eyes so the weak eye can grow. And what it's looking for is signs of ampliopia. And that's farsightedness, nearsightedness, lazy eye, astigmatism, and unequal curvature of the cornea. So the camera does a lot. And it costs a lot. So, and we do screenings at Peru, Keysville on Sable Forks. We do it at JCEO on their registration, which we did already. And then we have also gone to BOSIS. BOSIS is the hardest because a lot of the kids are special needs. And the national average is 10% of how many you screen. So one out of 10 is an average number for passing. And I think we were 25% there, so there were a lot of kids that... And maybe their eyes aren't bad. We've talked to ophthalmologists that are in Lions Clubs and they have said that yes, this is happening, but it's not at the point where the eye doctor will necessarily do anything about it yet. So they keep monitoring the situation. So it's just a good program. Now, additional notes. We'd like to offer to the board, no wait, switch please, but we'd like to offer to the board, see if you'd like to become involved in some of the things that we do around the town. Not that you have to be a member. We'd love to have members and we need new members. But say for example, the Greenup Day. Last year, Dave Dalton, Lion Dave Dalton ran the Greenup Day and did a wonderful job. And the people that came to it, you know, they were from all over the community. And I was thinking that maybe it would be worth the school to just get recognition saying, the school had sent five people out or 10 people out or whatever. You take your child, you bring him up and down your street, you just pick up trash. And it would be advantageous, I think, for the school to consider that.
Maybe Honor Society?
Yeah.
Get involved in either the Turkey Trot or the Greenup Day or some of those sorts of things?
Marcy Club, yeah, any of those. Or the other one was one of our members, Amy Davies runs the PTO. And Amy last year had set up the trunk and treat out here. And if you weren't here for it and if you didn't hear about it, the line of kids going through the parking lot right in front of the gym, doing that loop and then leaving was all the way out to 22B. Lots of kids. So, so to be involved in that, I know you're sponsoring the property, that's good. But I'm just saying that you could have a presence there and advertise yourself. What she's going to hand out, I think we have information on the backside, but there's a couple of sites that, actually not sites, they're YouTube clips that will explain the vision screening. And if you're not doing anything, some night, just grab this piece of paper, take a peek and see what the site is all about. I think one of them is six minutes long and the other is four minutes long. But it'd be well worth watching for its worth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to offer.
Thank you for being a dutyless school. No, a little quiet partner back there.
I know. I don't like him.
Somebody's not saying too much.
I'm here for moral support. I want to thank the board for allowing the Lions Club to use the facilities here for our Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving Day. That's our biggest fundraiser every single year. And without the use of this facility, we'd have to find another location, which would be very, very difficult. So from the bottom of my heart, I thank you.
Roy is a very dedicated lion. And he would be mad ass, oh, get out, at me if I didn't invite him to the ice screening here in Peru. And it's quite a thing to see because he's sitting as a lucky volunteers. But every time the kids come in, they want to run up and give a hug. But everybody knows Roy, so it's nice to have him there at the screening. Okay, thanks again. We'll get out of here.
So the next part of the superdescent report would be to talk just a little bit briefly about our first two days. It was really, I would say, a great success. It was a fan of the song in the newspaper. We had Brianna Henderson here. We also had Dr. Rehn. And we did a video with Shannon, an interview with her, what it regards to diversity in our schools. And it was really a, all meetings were really positive. I think that one of the best messages too was that we were talking about our, creating the culture we're looking for in our school, and that's the most important thing. From our classrooms to the message that we're sending out to the community and to our, in general, as teachers, as administrators, our story is what we're telling people about person to school. It was always important to remember that we recognize that we're a great school. And if we can sell that to other people and make sure people hear us talk about our school in a really positive way rather than a negative way in any way, we're going to be changing the culture of our school as well. So I would say it was probably a really positive first two days. Teachers came up afterwards, were very happy about it. And so we were, it was in your, that coverage in the newspaper, so we're very happy about that as well. And so then we had our first, we're on day four of school now. And, but we actually have a slideshow of pictures, music to share with you, our first day of school with our kids across the campus.
Welcome back. Your dreams were your ticket out. Welcome back to that same old place that you laughed about. Well, the names have all changed since you hung around. But those dreams have remained and they've turned around. Who'd have thought they'd need ya? Who'd have thought they'd need ya? Yeah, where we need ya. Yeah, where we need ya. Yeah, we tease him a lot 'cause we got him on the spot. Welcome back. Welcome back, welcome back, welcome back. Welcome back, welcome back. Yeah, we tease him a lot 'cause we got him on the spot. Welcome back. Welcome back, welcome back, welcome back. Welcome back, welcome back. Yeah, we tease him a lot. Welcome back, welcome back. 'Cause we got him on the spot. Welcome back, welcome back. Yeah, we tease him a lot. Welcome back, welcome back. 'Cause we got him on the spot. Welcome back, welcome back. Yeah, we tease him a lot 'cause we got him on the spot. Welcome back. Welcome back, welcome back, welcome back. Welcome back, welcome back, welcome back. Welcome back, welcome back, welcome back.
Welcome back, welcome back, welcome back.
I want, two, I want, two, three.
If you ever find yourself stuck in the middle of the sea, I'll sail the world to find you. If you ever find yourself lost in the dark and you can't see, I'll be the light to guide you. Find out what we're made of when we are called to help our friends in need. You can count on me like one, two, three. I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you like four, three, two, and you'll be there. 'Cause that's what friends are supposed to do, oh yeah. Ooh, ooh, yeah, yeah. If you're tossing and you're turning and you just can't fall asleep, I'll sing a song beside you. And if you ever forget how much you really mean to me, every day I will remind you, oh. Find out what we're made of when we are called to help our friends in need. You can count on me like one, two, three. I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you like four, three, two, and you'll be there. 'Cause that's what friends are supposed to do, oh yeah. Ooh, ooh, yeah, yeah. You'll always have my shoulder when you cry. I'll never let go, never say goodbye. You know you can count on me like one, two, three. I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you like four, three, two, and you'll be there. 'Cause that's what friends are supposed to do, oh yeah. Ooh, ooh, you can count on me, 'cause I can count on you.
Thank you. A lot of happy people. It's a splendid place, so it's exciting. Um, we have an open house, um, today. Our school started at the elementary school. And we have an open house Thursday, uh, middle school from five to six this week. And also after it is six thirty. Uh, so we're looking forward to having parents come in, see our spaces. We had lots of people in the other night. And it was exciting that. So, um, it was a great start and we're looking forward to the things we're going to be able to do this year. So, um, that's where we are.
Yeah, thank you.
I forgot something. Sorry, bro. No, that's okay. Um, first of all, I don't know who created that video, but I would like to congratulate whoever did on editing out all of the sweat on everybody's faces. Um, and that's about the only negative thing I think I could, I could say about the opening of school was the heat. Otherwise, I think the opening days of school had, have gone very well. I've heard from a lot of people really enthused about our speaker, Breonna Henderson. Um, I think some people found it, um, her message to be energizing and reaffirming, you know, that it's okay for teachers in the classroom to set the guidelines and actually hold students accountable to those, to those rules and that we're going to have the support, um, from our administrators on that. So I think, um, her message, I think she was excellent. I think I, um, I've had some people mention to me how it would be so nice if we could get her to do some more work and come back to Peru. So, you know, you guys deal with the budget, if there's anything in the budget to deal with. Get Breonna Henderson back, I think people would really enjoy that. It was also, um, because people were very thankful for the air conditioning in the auditorium. So, again, if there's money in the budget in a few years.
They'll be back, right?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Thorbs kept bringing us back there for meetings and nobody complained, so. Yeah, it was, I think a little eye-opening for some people during our PAT meeting. Because we asked, we had our new members come up and to see twenty-six, twenty-seven people standing across the stage. A lot of us who have been here for a while can't remember a group of new teachers that large in a long time. So it was eye-opening, the experience that we have to replace. With many of our members leaving or going elsewhere or retiring. But in talking to a lot of our new teachers, they, uh, they have a lot of energy, they seem to have a lot of good ideas and I think they're going to do well here at Peru. At least that's our hope, so. Couple other things, I mean, just a couple of things that normally we hear, um, seem to take a while to readjust. Um, I've heard positive things about the elementary dismissal, it's going, it's going smoother this year. Um, you know, it's not taking as long, people are doing now quicker. So, um, again, I think the year's been off to a great start. Um, I think, you know, speaking, um, you know, speaking for myself, um, you know, it's my first full year in the, in the middle school in the seventh grade. I'm kind of, I'm looking forward to just a new, um, you know, fu- future, you know, um, in, in a different aspect, so. Hopefully the year continues to go this way. And, um, as I said, I've said it every year, we're, since COVID hit, we're keep improving and improving and getting better. And I think this year's going to be, uh, one of our best in a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Uh, I am here to, once again, um, I'd like to continue the, the good things that are happening. All the wonderful things, that slideshow was fantastic and I honestly need to follow it. So whoever made that, great job. Um, but I am here to introduce these two amazing ladies. These are the site supervisors for PACE. This is Tracy Wildland and this is Trish Fergo. Um, they have, really, they, they've come in a little bit late to the game. They're new to PACE within the last six months, uh, in terms of the site supervisor position. But they have been rock stars, there's a huge amount to this. And they, we had our first day of PACE today, our, our full year of PACE. And they rolled with some punches and they did an amazing job. So I'm here to introduce them and they would like to tell you what we did this past summer, as well as what we have planned for this year.
Hi, everybody. I think I can speak for both Tracy and I, we're really excited to present this program. Um, I'm fairly new, I was just hired this summer, I think July eighteenth, I think. Um, so we've hit the ground running, Tracy's got a little bit more experience than I have. Definitely a program worth, worth, um, what we're doing, so. It's a five-year grant, competitive grant. We are in year two of this grant. It was awarded to us in 2021. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually that we're able to spend on, um, on materials, on people to work, any field trips, it's, it's been wonderful. Uh, our goal is to serve a minimum of two hundred and forty students each year, um, which sometimes is a struggle to get, but we're working on it. We're trying to really get our name out there. Um, as a matter of fact, I was, um, speaking with, uh, who was it? Uh, Olivia, Olivia Buskey from CBES came, um, we were talking and she does the newsletter. So I might have mentioned that she should come back and do a little newsletter on PACE, which she was really excited to do, so hopefully we'll get it out there. Um, but that's really our goal right now, is to kind of get the word out. So, um, we're doing everything we can to do that.
Thank you, that's great. So the summer, jump in Tracy, whenever you want to, do you want, you want to?
Yes, we have, that was it. So we had two weeks in the summer, uh, for kids to come in. And I thought it would be, we thought it would be a great way for parents to kind of give their kids some enrichment activities in the summer, uh, when they probably, you know, just need to get out of the house and stuff. So it was well-received. Uh, we had one in July, one in August. And we also had, um, some power-up, where our summer athletics programs, where they brought in the athletes and they kept them on this, uh, workout regimen. Uh, Bill Pafford, Tiffany Berry did an amazing job at getting these kids and they worked hard, like really hard. Like I would look over and go, wow. And they would come back. And so they, they wanted to be challenged and they were. And so it helps our athletic programs, um, and also then really spoke to, you know, after you leave high school, you know, collegiate or even beyond, you know, uh, getting them into healthy habits. And so it's a great program. Uh, so a hundred and three told students participate in the summer's activities, which was a decent amount. So if you, I love these pictures, I've had a couple of them. I didn't get to see them yet. Um, so summer PACE activities, we had the opportunity, and I'm going to let Trish talk on this because this was her brainchild and I got the pleasure of working with her.
Okay, so, um, before I was hired as site supervisor, I am put in to, um, teach a class in August. And I, my goal was to can salsa with a group of middle schoolers, um, which was great and people signed up for it. But we were able to actually partner with North Point Community Farm, it's a CSA. So it took a while, I'm going to be honest with you, like, I was a little nervous because when I first emailed them, they said, yes, they do it, but then we know what happens, right? Like, um, so many of our farms in the area just do not have the manpower. So then they weren't giving back to me no food, it's like, oh my gosh. So I contacted Northern Orchard, which was good because they would like to help us out. I contacted Ralph's, which is good because they still, they would like to help us out too in the future. But anyways, this is North Point Community Farm and we were able to take the kids there. Um, Mike and Marissa were the, um, owners and they gave the kids a great tour. We were able to, you can see, they were able to go in and pick the tomatoes, which is, it excites me, I don't know if it'll excite you, but they grow their tomatoes upstream. So it's not like they don't have the tomato pages, they actually grow upstream to, they have a huge system and they were just able to pick the tomatoes off, it was crazy. Um, so they were able to learn how the tomatoes grow. Um, we, they, we got, um, this is actually garlic, they specialize in garlic, so they were able to see the garlic drying. And this was, we went on Monday and there was all this garlic drying. And then we went on Wednesday again with a different group of kids and it was, like, all harvested and got, like, it was crazy. They're like, oh my gosh, what happened? So, um, all the peppers, all the onions, all, everything we got from, from North Point Community Farm.
Where is that?
It's, just past, um.
Is it right before the church?
Yeah, and on the turnpike.
Oh, okay.
Up on the right. So, and it's, I mean, still open, but they promote that nine to six, I think you can go, you can, it's kind of on your own system, but, or you can join it. Yeah, a month later weekly.
Something I'd really like to say about this, one of the things I think our school, um, is going to do a better job at is hark a table. We need to teach kids that salsa doesn't come in a jar and it's, you know, they don't know how, how it comes about. Kids were so excited to work in the cafeteria with both of us. We put on music, um, we talked about safety. Um, they got to see the things that went in, um, and many kids were so excited to, to help harvest because, you know, when we started picking stuff, they could go and pick out anything they wanted. So that they would say, well, we're the red ones, and kids would come over half red and look, turn around. But we, we had the opportunity to, to go into all these areas and they were so, they were so welcoming and they were talking about the hard work that goes into farming and it's hard work, but it's rewarding. This dog right here, one student we had that was just kind of not really, I don't think really interested in going here, that kid made a connection with this dog, that dog followed him everywhere. And that made his whole program, like, he was so excited. And you could see, they were just so excited, it's the farm dog, and they just talked about farm dogs. So this is an awesome program, we want to do more, maybe a community garden here at school. Something, yeah, these kids, because the gardening is so important. And many kids did raise their hand, but they got their hands dirty, which was not, and some kids were freaked out about getting their hands dirty. We're like, we're going to get you dirty because you need to, this is, you need to be part of this process.
And on the second day that we went, and that was actually, it was downpour the whole entire time. Um, and so they were able to see them come off the fields and they were drenched in muddy with the boots up to there and they were packing it. So it was, it was really neat for them to see.
Some people's eighth graders had their brand of school shoes completely full of mud.
And we have samples of, uh, the salsa that they will get. You will have to, um, salt it yourself because we didn't want to put too much in in case you were not to salt. Um, so they also let us have, uh, some more pictures of the field trip, but they let us go out and pick, uh, and cut down flowers, this beautiful flower. The kids were picking up beautiful things to bring home to their family, which I thought was a really nice thing.
Yep.
So K nine, um, and I can't remember if, uh, it was the DC who came, I, I can't remember because I was only there for a split second. But, um, DC came, talked about, um, what the K nine unit does. Some kids were interested in this program. Um, they showed, you know, the dog was not just a pet, it wasn't a pet, it was basically a working dog and that's treated differently. And they, and he explained how that was and why that was. Um, and he ran the dog through a bunch of different things, obedience, uh, take, um, activities. And the kids were pretty excited, they had to go find venison in the car, or a truck, hit it in there and the dog found it and they just, you know, looked up at attention and stuff. So kids were still, they don't want to touch the dog, but they don't want you to do that, it's a working dog. So they kind of, he kind of learned a little bit about, um, or they kind of learned a little bit about what the, uh, K nine unit does for that. Some kids were interested in pursuing that. Uh, prepping the food, anytime you have food, you have fun and, uh, kids loved it. The food ones are probably the biggest. I think kids are so excited because they know they get to eat it. And so, um, they, they prepped for, um, different types of things, if we can get these pictures.
I know.
Um, they prepped for different kinds of activities, um, like things that they can make at their home safely, um, to let them know that you can prepare food, you don't have to wait for mom or dad or anyone to cook, you can do this stuff. So they learned a little bit about measuring, they learned about safety in the kitchen, um, nutrition, so all those good things. Um, I wasn't a part of this, but from what I heard, this person brought, like, everything that you would need to get kids excited about being in the outdoors and possibly becoming a forty-sixer or, um, anything in our area, our local area, to be able to climb, like, you know, camp, fish and use our area to the fullest.
This woman, I'm just going to say them quickly because her achievement is astronomical. This woman has done all forty-six peaks in every single season. So she's done them all in the winter, all in the spring, all in the summer, which is an amazing, amazing accomplishment. So, um, I find that wonderful. So we, we were very lucky to have her come speak to us about what that entails.
Hiking at Pointa Rush, so one of the food sessions, they would prep the food and then they prepped it for the lunch that would be at Pointa Rush. So they made their lunch basically the day before. And they went and they went hiking at Pointa Rush, which is something local here to teach kids that, you know, you could go and be in the outdoors and not drive that far, you know, and, uh, they had a good time, uh, it was great weather, so they. Uh, fitness activities, we have like a middle school power-up, so, um, they, different, you can see some of the teachers here, they taught them form, they taught them again, you know, being physically active, using their body, um, as for body weight exercises, they did show them how to use, uh, proper equipment. Um, and again, they, Katie and Amy, they, they made them work hard. And the kids again came back, which I was really thinking the first time, they're not going to be back tomorrow. Um, but they did, so they want, they want to be challenged and that's what we need to hear.
A lot of the participants were new sixth grader, so they were coming over, they were able to be introduced to the cardio room and the weight room, be able to see what we have to offer on the site campus.
And the ghost tour, um, so they brought them on a ghost tour. Um, this guy was amazing, um, had to do it on a bus one time because it was pouring down rain. But gave the history and, um, gave the history and kids were so enthralled by that, which would probably lead them to want to know more about Plattsburgh and the surrounding areas because ghosts just kind of grab everybody. So, you know, it's kind of, not really, but. Nobody got grabbed. But they were excited to be there. Uh, high school power-up, same, same thing that we had spoken about. For the, kids are very into this, um, and form and this is how you have to get them young so that they keep this for a lifetime. And that's really what our goal is here, trying to get all parts powered up. They got a chance to go to visit Plattsburgh State, um, and they got toured around, which was a nice little.
They did have soccer players come to Peru to, uh, participate with them. We had fifty-four athletes that we served for Elmore's campus, but we did have some Plattsburgh State soccer players come to us as well and then they invited us there to tour their facilities as well. It was pretty amazing.
Which is a great career connection also, so that when they go, they might want to go to Plattsburgh State and maybe play sport or.
So this is our schedule, um, um, during the school year. They, that's okay, that's all right, yeah. Um, from, uh, basically tenth period, it's, it's homework time. Then they come, right now they're coming to my room, they get a healthy snack, take attendance. Then three to four thirty is their enrichment time, um, and then we get home, so it worked out well tonight.
These are all the things that we're hoping to be able to offer this year. Each, each year we get more, uh, presenters that come with these amazing ideas that are getting kids' attention and it's not just the, you know, the local stuff, it's different things from coding to career exploration, drawing and painting. There's a little bit for everyone there. And our hope is to get them to be able to, uh, be even more enriched by having them try things that may make them a little uncomfortable, but by the end they may go, that was amazing. I would never have tried that if someone had put me in that program.
Stepping outside your comfort zone, I think is something really scary, right? It all like things to say the same, but that's what we're going to try with courage. Step out a little bit, I always tell my kids, twenty seconds of saying courage, try it. Um, and you never know, who might like it, so that's kind of our goal, to get them to grow.
Little plug, we have two huge things, I think they're named, I can't remember what their names are, but we have hydroponics. So we grow our own lettuce, we got to get them up and running. Dean Leno did a beautiful job last year, we have two, um, and we hope we can do something with that. Um, there's something to be said, you take that right off and kids eat it and once you've tried that, you never want a bag of lettuce again, it is amazing.
That was another thing that we forgot to mention is the kids, when we went to the farm, were able to eat right off the vine, which was, it was delicious.
It'd be amazing how many kids didn't know what garlic was, I'm like, well, here's the rock, pull that off and try it. And some kids were eating it wrong, I was like, what? She ate it, she's like, it was good.
How long is each, um, activity? So we go in six, six-week sessions. So we have some activities that go every single Tuesday. We do have some activities that go Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday, depending on what kind of time they need. Right now, we're trying to finish our boat, uh, which was a project we started last year, so we're doing, they're going every single day. Um, like welding, uh, Mr. Sorgle has started a welding program, uh, and he wants to do that every Tuesday all year long. But that, you know, we, um, with a smaller number of students, but they would learn the very basics of welding and create a project. So we normally go on six-week sessions, um, and, and it would be Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, but the schedule does vary based on what our, our enrichment leaders can do for the roll schedule. It could be every Tuesday, it could be every day. Is everything like sixth grade to twelfth grade or certain activities like certain grades? So the grant is written six through twelve. Um, however, there are certain activities like welding that we do feel at the time are appropriate for high school only. And as I said, we do have smaller numbers in those just for the safety aspect. Um, we have had, there's only a few things that have asked to be only high school, um, but again, they involve a safety factor. Other than that, everything is six to twelve.
And our goal is to promote more high schools, um, you know, kids, they don't realize, I think Mr. Sorgle's going to be like a gateway when he, um, presents that other kids are going to want to try to join if we get those things that will make them, uh, want to. Like welding is a great career, uh, opportunity, so we just have to find those things that get kids in high school to come to us. You know, they're so busy with sports and earth and all that stuff, so we have to kind of get their attention.
We're trying to find other activities as well that are interesting to them and, and also career exploration activities. If we could get somebody that was interested to come into the building trades, I think that would be fantastic. I'm just telling you that right now, that's a really good idea. So our plans for this year, we are, we're bringing Plattsburgh State students in to help with our enrichment, with our tutoring, with our mentoring. Um, we are, we really want to partner with the Elmore SPCA and try to do a community aspect so that we can get back to our community as well and get kids excited and, and into, uh, community involvement. And then, uh, we are, we are continuing our career fair. If you or anybody you know is interested in being part of our career fair as a business, that would be, or a business or a career that would be, um, promoted, please let us know. Uh, we had twenty-four businesses last year and we're looking to increase that recently. And then, so we're, like, we're hoping to engage our community as best we possibly can. If you are interested in, in, um, being an enrichment leader or you just have an idea that you'd like to toss out, that we can flesh out, please always reach out. We're, we're very willing to, um, to do anything we can to bring the enrichment to our kids. Do you have any questions? Please. And so, we have foster children that go to another, another school and they also have, they call it, um, yellow, we send them to activities. And, and they do a lot of activities like, and I, I understand we only have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but like they went to Great Wolf Lodge, you know, they go to J Peak. So they do like daily events as well, or like Great Escape. Um, and it could be the way this grant is written, but are there any ways or any grants that we can look into to give these, some of these students some opportunities that, like our foster son went to Great Wolf Lodge, he would have never had that opportunity unless we brought him, you know? Like, they took a turn of bus down for the day. Um, so it wasn't overnight, it, we left at, I think, six-thirty in the morning, then he got home around eleven o'clock at night. So, like, opportunities for our students to be able to partake in something like that. Sure, absolutely. We've built a lot of money into the budget this year to do as many field trips as we possibly can. We do have to focus them on a career that they could explore, but, um, I'm really hoping to convince Mr. Urban that, to do something with drama, uh, as a career and we could do some sort of a field trip, that's a little plug right there, Mr. Urban. Um, but anything career-oriented, we did take kids to the Wild Center last year, we talked about wildlife, uh, management. We've taken kids to, please help me.
They went to Snowshoe Wing as, uh, the land trust?
Yes, we talked about the land trust and, and, um, being a forest, is a forest ranger, I believe, that was talking to us. Um, as long as it's career-oriented, it will fall under the parameters, or curimeters of our grant, we can fund that. We probably don't have the money for a charter of us.
The grant that you're talking about is obviously a different focus, so, and it's a lot more money.
Sure.
So the salsa that you're getting, if it's not as spicy as you'd like.
It's a little bit sad, you let the kids decide, but it was enough, so, uh.
But enjoy. This, yeah. Thank you, it's a wonderful program.
Looks great.
Really to have the focus on what is going to happen as. Wonderful.
Thank you.
We'll be raffling these up later.
Very nice. Okay, on to our consent agenda. Ten, eight, three, two, motion. Any discussion on any of the items? Okay, on favor? On our votes, motion carried. Consent agenda eleven, um, new business, we have A through I, should we do H separately?
Probably.
Yeah. Right.
Well, we have, we're adding a J.
Yeah.
A through J and then.
That's right.
We'll put H out.
Yeah, I did make my I into a J and I missed that. So, uh, if I could have a motion for A through J with the exception of H one and H two. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters. Any questions on any of those other than H one and H two? Okay, on favor?
Aye.
You don't want to post? Motion carried, okay. Have a motion for H one?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Motion for H two? Motion, motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters. Any discussion? Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Twelve consent agenda personnel, now this is A through M, there are additions to I, J and K. I think I got all of us. I think we got all of us. Um, have a motion? Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamilton. Any discussion on any of those? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And anyone opposed, motion carried. On thirteen, new business, again, we probably need to separate each one of us. So motion to, um, have anybody attending each area six to nine on October five. Motion? Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamilton. Discussion, can anyone go to that? Anyone else wanting to go? I can't make that night, so, um, we don't have anyone going on either side, but, yeah. Okay. Okay. All in favor of representatives going on behalf of the Department of Education? And anyone opposed? Okay, motion carried. And the resolutions book, very, you know, I, I think we had a little spark from Mr. Webenero, but, wow! We looked at that, we, that resolutions book, Peru's in there a number of times. It was really, I mean, I took a quick scan this afternoon, and it was really comprehensive and so on. Interesting pieces that I saw, but, um, the bus, you know, the bus, you'll let us cross, and hopefully we delayed that a little while. Um, one of the things that I saw was really interested me, you know, we want to go for zero emissions, but, emissions, but our diesel buses are twenty-three to four percent, uh, isn't that amazing? So hopefully we'll put in, delay it for two years and, and maybe wait a little while on that. So, and motion two, do we have to do anything else?
Uh, you can actually move a second to take no action, which is what we usually do.
Okay, okay, oh, and I know, yeah, and Mr. Webenero is going to, yeah, do that meeting. That's the way to be at one team meeting, okay.
We have to say yes, I've learned this over the years.
He deserves extra sauce.
And, you know, he likes those, um, resolutions, so that's good. I, it was, it was really, you take a look at it, it's comprehensive, and it's, I, I can see where, you know, the ones that were opposed should be opposed, and, so, okay, so, uh, any action just to, uh, do nothing other than allow Mr. Webenero to be our voice at this, um, uh, delegates meeting? More motion, Mr. Hamilton, second.
Second.
Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Motion carried. Um, board member attendance at the Vi Virtual Board Officers Academy on October sixth, I have my registration.
I have mine, but I'll have to donate it.
You have to, she already do it.
Yeah.
You want me to register, you want her to?
It's a half day, right?
Yes.
That's fine, I, I agree.
It's, it's virtual.
It's what we did last time, right?
Right, it's virtual.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yes, please, okay.
Have a motion?
Oh.
This is, uh, Mr. Hamilton, and then second, Mrs. Graves, and Mrs. Mitchell will be added to that. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, anyone opposed? Motion carried. And then, um, okay, our committees and teams.
Correct.
Okay. After our retreat, we did look at some things, and we realized that our team, we, actually, our negotiations teams, we really don't need anything right now.
That's why I like being on those teams.
Oh, but we're not, no, no one is negotiating at this point? Okay. Not this year. Okay, or, which one?
CSEA.
Or CSEA.
CSEA, okay, so these are, uh, should be listed as teams, CSEA negotiations, PAT negotiations, PAC negotiations. So we don't, right now, we really don't need anything from PAT or PAC, but we need some volunteers for CSEA. If anyone interested in being, um, I thought Mr. Peters was a member of that.
Nope. I have resigned.
Okay, anyone, uh, interested in being a representative?
I was gonna say trifecta.
Okay, so, Mrs. Mitchell?
Wait, you're on all three?
Yeah.
I'm happy to continue.
And Mr. Hamilton, okay? We don't need anyone on PAT and PAC at this point?
Still gonna claim that up there.
Okay, Mitchell, okay, good, okay. Anyone else on CSEA, willing to do CSEA?
I can do CSEA.
Okay. Okay, so right now, we have for CSEA negotiations, we have, uh, Mr. Hamilton, Mrs. Mitchell, and Mrs. Boswell Davies, so that's good. And PAT, at this point, we just have, uh, Mrs. Mitchell, who is willing to do PAT and PAC. Is there anybody else who's?
All on.
Which one, any of those? Both of those, okay. Okay, which one, Mr. Peters?
It's limited.
Okay, and Mr. Peters, PA, PAT, how's that?
Sounds good.
And then PAC, anybody, Mrs. Graves, okay. So we have those staffs.
We have you on there, ready for you.
Yep. So we've got those three?
Yeah.
So those are our teams, when we finished with, um, our retreat, we realized that, um, there are district committees that board members serve on, and one of them is tech vision. I would like to continue on that one, anyone else? Tech vision, Mr. Webenero? Anyone else? Okay, strategic plan, again, I was on that one, I would like to continue with that one, anyone else on strategic plan? Mrs. Mitchell? That's it, Mrs. Graves? Okay, either, Mrs., uh, can we put you down as an alternate?
Sure.
Stephanie as the alternate. And then the communication, I don't, now that we have that established with Mr. Urban, maybe we can move a little further on communications committee, uh, before, we have Mr. Peters, Mr. Webenero, and Mrs. Graves, uh, would you like to remain? Or? Okay, so we've got our three communications. And the safety committee, um, I would like to remain on that, and we have Mrs. Mitchell and Mr. Webenero. What's that, this way?
I'd like to remain.
Okay, so we have three of each, on each one. And then, uh, we've, the committee that really is strictly members, was an audit and finance. Now, when we talked about that, they thought it should be both, but we thought maybe audit slash finance?
We did, and so it was a conversation about, um, there was like, there was an instru- it was basically an whole construction committee.
But we have, no, we have construction, totally separate and different. Okay, okay, so audit and, huh, remember she, she said audit and finance, two separate ones, and we thought audit slash finance, at least start maybe? Okay, who would like to be on the audit and finance?
I'm happy to remain on that.
Okay, Mark?
I can.
And Stephanie? And I can, so we've got our three on the audit, finance. Construction plant, that was another one, that, uh, was strictly board members, okay? Uh, who would like to be on that one? Mark, are you around?
Yeah, I can continue.
Okay, Mr. Peters?
Yeah.
Mr. Hamilton? And Mrs. Graves, if you want to, okay. I could go on as an alternate. And then policy laws. Okay, now, our building connectors, who would be the, um, the connector for the elementary pre-K two? Mr. Webenero? Okay? And three-five? Who was?
Yeah.
Mr. Hamilton, at three-five? Middle?
I can do middle as well. Okay.
Okay. Uh, Steve, Stephanie, and Mark, okay. So it leaves high school?
Yeah.
Mrs. Mitchell?
I don't do high school as well.
And I can go as an alternate on high school and middle. Okay, that completes our new listing, I think, okay?
Very efficient.
Okay, well, we've had our retreat, and we've realized what we have to do, and we've got all the committees that, uh, that look at says we should do, and then up all the others were internal. So, uh, have a motion to accept those volunteers on the teams, on the district committees, and then on the board committees. Motion, motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second, Mr. Peters. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No, anyone opposed, motion carried. Okay, E. Have a motion to approve the therapy model agreement. Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamilton, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed, motion carried. We get down to the end, and thank you for your patience tonight, hoping not back an hour after all that, and, yes, we...
May I actually want to congratulate the upcoming tenured.
Oh, that's right. I mentioned, I had a note, I had a note, just congratulations on the people that attend here tonight, and on our new split for communications, we've got some high expectations, Mr. Urban, and congratulations with Mr. Barry, and Mrs. Rabidow, and, and Mrs. Mitchell. Okay, so thank you very much for reminding me. And now, we need an executive session, so motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed, motion carried.